Order at 6:00 P.M. Roll call Ashton Fowler, Tiffany Nick, Nate Burr.
Here.
Lee Perryman. Vacation was provided by Brian Talk prior to the work session. Please stand for the pledge.
Would you consider the flag of the United States of America, consider it one which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Report from Mayor Hagel. Glad to see you doing well after your surgery.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to take a moment to reach out and say thank you. Thank you to all the friends, relatives, constituents throughout the city, for your well wishes and mainly for the prayers that I received from the prayer of his strength for us. Thank you so much. Chief Kelly Johnson, thank you and your department. Alex Lambert, I thank her and her staff. Casey Cassley, Epperson, and her husband, thank you so much for what you have done for me. God bless you. Just one thing, I bring on Lee Hyatt, who's the governor of the state of Alabama. Kay Ivy is announced that from the 23rd to the 25th, it's going to be tax-free. This is a tornado and hurricane season and has given people in the state of Alabama an opportunity for severe weather preparedness or sales tax. So if you need to take advantage of this, anything from $60 dollars or less, generators from $1,000 or less will not have to pay any state tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I need a motion to amend the agenda with an add-on. Going to add David Spade to receive 60 days, beginning March 1st to the 29th of April, to vacate 317 West Third Street.
I would also like to add that we elected you City Council President and City Council Vice President. Go to him.
I'll make the motion. Or you made the motion. I'll make the second. You've got to call for votes.
Roll call vote. How did this get added to the agenda already?
It's during the amendments.
We didn't discuss that in the work session. How can that be added?
We added it to the agenda. It's aligned with everything else. But the agenda's been amended before we discussed amending the agenda.
Right. We discussed it in the works. That's part of the rules. Pull out the rules.
Add it to the agenda by the majority voting.
Hang on. You know what else you can do?
We haven't adopted an agenda. We're amending an agenda right now. Nothing's been adopted.
Then I don't think we can amend the agenda.
Okay, there's one vote.
Lee?
No.
Ms. Nick?
Yes.
Nate? Yes.
Mitch Fowler?
Yes.
The agenda's been amended.
When do you have the law on that? Let's see how this gets on the hearing at 6:00 P.M. And if we can get it added to the agenda.
This can add on to the agenda.
Let's add this on to the end. When will you look at the law? So that was not...
We still may have it.
I'm not, but... Okay, so... All right.
Well, since the item is amended, you have to vote.
Right. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Nay? Approve minutes of the regular work session held on February 6, 2024. What a mo... Ashton Fowler? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve regular city council meeting minute held February 6, 2024. Motion. Perryman? Second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Have a public hearing to consider abatement of nuisance structure located at 807 North Main Avenue. Speakers are limited up to five minutes each. Groups presenting or supporting the same similar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. Open. The public hearing is now open. Any comments?
Madam President, would you repeat what you just said, please?
Public hearing to consider abatement of nuisance structure located at 807 North Main Avenue. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. Groups presenting or supporting the same similar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. Open public hearing and call for comments.
I guess I have a comment back.
You can please come forward. Say your name and address.
Hello, my name's Benjamin Dyson. I live at 100 East Eighth Street. 807 is one of my properties. And what I'm saying is, I was trying to get an extension, a third-day extension, to continue cleaning the property up and ask for permission to finish the job that I've already ordered and give to y'all satisfaction.
Thank you, Lord. I get it. That's been... We started on that probably a year ago and we had to pull off of it. I don't see how we can give you an extension tonight, sir. Not on these properties. They need to be torn down and then I know there's one over there on Eighth Street that they cleaned up and this accumulated some more nuisance. So I don't... I for one, I can't vote about it.
Okay, but one thing I've worked hard on is the last... Y'all put signs in my yard. Gave me 10 days, cleaned up, and I've been working hard and I've made a lot of improvement and just need a little more time to clean it up. And if it's not to y'all satisfaction, do what you want to.
Do you have any documentation or proof of your progress from the last time?
Yes, ma'am. I have pictures.
Can we see some before and after?
They're in my phone. They're in the truck. But you could ride by and check it out. I'm sure y'all took pictures when y'all went over there to start with.
I know. I just thought maybe you had some proof of your progress. You said you've been working hard to get it cleaned up.
Yes, ma'am. I have been working hard. In fact, all day today, from 5:30 to come up here, I was working, trying to get it looking good. And I will continue day and night to get it looking good.
Mr. Whitstone, Building and Code, comment?
I'm going for it. I have no confidence. I mean, let's go back on the agenda.
And you haven't seen any progress?
When Scott left, Scott did the signs before he retired. They went back and compared the old stuff, the old records with what's there now. And it had actually increased since the time that we had cleaned it up. Or not completely cleaned it up, but working it.
I for one can guarantee that it's looked better than it did last week. It's going to look better tomorrow than it is today.
I can't give a word. Y'all make a call. What's the number of days? Can we decide?
I mean, what is the speed? I mean, why are you going to do it so fast?
Because it's been... It's been a year, bud.
Thirty more days. Thirty more days would not kill you. You know what I'm saying? It's not... And I'll tell you one thing, too. I've seen other properties that are three times worse than mine. Houses over there, buttermilk section is falling down over there by the baseball field in Biggie Comer. Five or six houses are burnt. It's been sitting there for years and years. Y'all don't know nothing about that. I don't know if I seen the ceiling or not, but I know that buttermilk hill is. And there's houses over there that's vacant, doors wide open, and my houses are actually functional. People live in my house.
Ms. Nick, all those houses are on the list. They are on the list, and it's a process for us to get here. So let me ask you this.
For one thing, I'm telling you, that's my only source of income is rental properties. And I've got renters moving in, tenants moving in.
There's no way they can move in those three houses on Main, Benji. You know they can't.
But the power is on. I stayed in one of those houses.
You stay on Eighth Street?
I got two houses.
Benji.
The power is on in those houses. They're functional.
We appreciate you coming to the council, but I think we've given plenty of time to get it cleaned up.
Why can't you give me 30 more days? I mean, what's the big problem? What's the big...
There's been a precedent set that, you know, we've given the time.
What about the other houses on the job? I'm not messing with you.
They're on our list.
They're on the list.
But y'all haven't got signs for one of those houses.
Because it's not time for that.
We will.
But the worst thing to mind is, I've got... You saw it in my yard. I'm improving my place.
Benji.
You've got closed mind, man. You need to close mind.
Ms. Nick, please have a seat. Thank you. We've heard your time is up.
Now, you see, I've come up here and y'all don't want to listen. That's not what I got to say. Right by my house right now, you see improvement. You'll see my yard looks just about as good as your yard.
Mr. Dyson, we hear you. I understand, but we've given a minimum amount of time.
You're not hearing me at all. You're not hearing me. I'm not here. I'm working every day to improve the property. And I've got five minutes to say what I got to say, and that's what I'm saying.
We hear what you're saying. Let me ask you, is this your first time asking for an extension?
Yes, ma'am. It sure is. The last time, they come and they overdone it. Put everything in sheds and they tore my sheds down, took all my tools, and charged me $12,000 in two days to clean up my property. And it was going to destroy my barn and everything, putting it stuff.
So you haven't...
It's unfair, and I think that y'all are picking on me because y'all want my property.
I'm asking. So Mike, is this his first time asking for an extension?
For the reason it stopped last time, and we agreed with the street department labor and equipment, and we had all that flooding happen, and he had to pull off it, we had some equipment failure, and that's why it stopped. And we were supposed to bid it out. That's been delayed several times.
Yeah, but I've never asked for an extension.
And we are where we are now. I mean, I don't know, Alex, if we have a contractor to make the difference.
We haven't figured out yet, Mike.
I believe y'all find the highest contractor y'all can find, $6,000 a day. I mean, I wish I had that job. And tear down houses that my grandpa built. They're still functionally safer, can live in them.
The one you stay in on Eighth Street, that's not the one. We just want you to clean that one up.
Eight 07.
The rest of it on Main have got to come down.
Eight 13, somebody lives in it. Eight 11, it's burnt. It burnt. Eight 09, it's livable. Eight 07, all my stuff is where I live. And eight 05, it's officially rented out. So, and they are livable.
There's holes in the sides and on the roofs, and there's packs of shingles.
There's not no holes in the roof.
There's no holes in the roof. There's a pack of shingles sitting on top of one for years.
Take a picture of them, Marsha.
Mr. Dyson?
No, it's mine. There's not a hole in the roof. There's not a hole in the roof. There's a hole in the roof of the bar house.
Mr. Dyson, please do not call any of the council members on it. Kelly, can you please?
Five minutes up. He's telling a story. I'm holding my roof.
Okay, public hearing. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, just close it. It's closed. It's closed. Okay, public hearing is closed. Sorry. I need a motion. I need... I need an introduction. Sorry, excuse me. I need an introduction for resolution number 21, 2024.
I'll introduce.
I need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I need a motion to pass.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Item number 10. Public hearing to consider abatement of nuisance structure located at 805 North Main. Speakers are limited up to five minutes each. Groups presenting or supporting the same similar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. Open public hearing.
Excuse me, just say that again?
This is for 805.
That's another property?
North Main.
That's not the same property? It's another property?
Correct.
It's a separate issue.
I've got five minutes to talk about that one, too.
Yeah, now we've got five minutes, but we will... Look, you cannot flash out at our council members. That's not tolerated against the rules.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for that. Somebody's saying something that's not true. Upsetting, I'm sorry. Eight 05, people was living it last year. There's nothing wrong with it. It's got shingles on the roof. The roof, it's got a couple of small leaks, but there's no hole in the roof. It's got shingles on the roof to be repaired. There's no plywood. It's messed up. You can go in attic and look, and the wood is still good. It's got siding on it. I expect the siding on it is good. There's nothing wrong with that house. I'd like to see somebody go in there and say, and tell me, the plumbing's working, electricity's working. There should be no problems. I have the outside is cleaned up, and I'm working on that. And like I said, give me 30 more days, and the place is going to look great. I've got new sod going down, already on the ground right now. And I've got workers cleaning it up right now as we speak. And I mean, all I'm asking for is a little bit of time, 30 days. If it's not done in 30 days, y'all do what you want to. If 30 days, that place is going to look great, and there ain't going to be nothing y'all can say about it. You know, I don't understand why y'all won't give me 30 days. I've never asked for an extension. Like the lady asking, have I ever had an extension? No, I have not.
Mike, what was the original start date on that again?
I don't know.
They put the sign in my yard last Monday morning.
Building Department didn't request it to be put back on there at this time, so I'm not going to have one.
The city attorney requested it be placed on the agenda. The city council will read. It was first done by resolution 35-2022, approved on June 7, 2022, by the city attorney.
Had almost two years.
Look, Mike, is this one of this has the business connected to it on 805? All over the same street. So every house okay?
Now, the reason why I'm fighting for these houses, for one reason, is because this property has been in my family for over 100 years. And my grandfather built every one of those houses with hand tool by himself, him and his mom. And those houses have lived, they've been there since the 40s and 50s. They were not moved from the middle village. They were brought, they were built there by my grandfather. And I moved here in 2006 and restored them and been trying to maintain them. I've accumulated stuff in the yard, and I realize that. And I could ride by and I could see that these need to be picked up and need to be improved. I'm just one man, but I'm trying to clean up eight yards. And I'm making progress, you know, and all I ask for is 30 more days. It's not... We'll come back up here and have another meeting, and if it's not to y'all satisfaction.
Mr. Dyson, I know, I understand what you're saying and asking of us, but it's also been a year since this predicament's been happening that there are more, and you're saying that you're cleaning this up and all that, and all we're seeing is additions, too. We haven't seen any of that in over a year.
Okay.
Some of these properties.
Well, y'all gave me 10 days. It hasn't been a year. I mean, I cleaned up and then accumulated. The thing is, is my property, you can see it from the front to the back. There's nowhere to hide nothing. You know, you can go down one street and see behind my house, you go up the street and see from my house. So I'm in the process of putting up a privacy fence around the place to hide what I want to keep, and I'm going to eliminate what I don't need. I understand that it does not look good. And it's an old house. You know, you got to maintain it. I'm trying to do that.
Okay, Mr. Dyson, we understand your five minutes are up. More, we can go ahead. We're going to vote on this one this morning. Let's close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Dyson. I need an introduction to resolution number 22, 2024, please.
Callard Dyson.
Ashton Fowler. I need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
Ashton Fowler, second?
Second.
Nate Burr, all in favor?
Yeah.
Item number 11. I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Item number 11. Public hearing to consider abatement of nuisance structure located at 809 North Main Avenue. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. Groups presenting or supporting the same similar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. Open public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. One thing I still don't understand is how y'all go after someone for a house where somebody's actually living or can live, and not going towards people that own properties, the houses, where the roof is completely gone, and there's nobody living in it, and they're not even trying to do anything to it.
We've addressed that situation in your first appearance.
Well, I've got five minutes to talk, and I'm asking you again. This is a separate property? And I'm asking a question. Why are y'all going after me when there's other properties that are a lot worse than mine? Can anybody tell me that?
We have a list.
I know, but I don't see nobody's house in this town that's got signs in front of their house like mine and only got 10 days to complete the job.
There's been multiple times that have had those signs that we've abandoned.
Okay, what I'm asking is, is I need an extension. You're saying property D, property C, property B, property A. You know, I'm only one man, and I'm trying to get it done. I've worked day and night to try to get it done. Mr. Johnson, his officer's come by there and see me at night and out there working, you know, and to talk to me. I'm out there all day long, you ride by. Like I said before, I'm laying sod, I'm clearing debris. It looks better today than it did yesterday, and it's going to look better tomorrow than it is today. And all I'm asking is for 30 more days. Y'all have not gave me extensions. A person does not get an extension, ever? Y'all do not give extensions?
We do, but it's a long process. It's been two years.
But y'all say two years, but y'all only gave me 10 days. You know, when y'all come last time, y'all left, so it must have been all right. And now you say it's bad again, but you gave me 10 more days, okay? So you say it's two years, but it hasn't been two. That's closing. We're talking about 10 days. You know, I don't know that y'all are going to approve of it until y'all tell me. Okay, y'all give me 10 days, and I've been out there working for 10 days, and all I'm asking for is an extension. A little extension, 30 days. I mean, what's the rush? I mean, if it ain't done in 30 days, y'all can do what you want to.
Which one of these houses are you actually, do you live in? Which one do you live in?
I live in 100 East Eighth Street.
Which one is behind Dixie's Road?
100 East Eighth Street.
100 East Eighth.
That's the big house.
Yeah.
And the house right beside it is 108, and it is livable. It's remodeled on the inside. It's got stuff on the outside, but I've been working on it yesterday and today and getting stuff thrown away off the property, hauling off.
But our point is, I think, Mr. Dyson, on all these properties, is the procrastination is taking place. You were made aware of it back in '22 and had all this time. And yes, we advertised the law with those signs to give you the 10 days. But that's 10 days on top of the one and a half, two years that you've had.
The one and a half, two years, like I said, they was out there and they did what they was going to do. They left. They left.
We had to take it off.
But that's, I mean, really, that, you know, in my mind, I was clear. Y'all did not say that my equipment broke, that the weather was bad. Y'all doing work all over town. Why just stop doing my property? Yep? What I'm asking is, y'all said 10 days. I've been working for 10 days. I'm asking for 30 more days. Y'all don't consider giving somebody 30 more days?
You're down to the one-minute mark.
Okay, all right, but I'm going to say it again. Can I get a 30-day extension? I mean, it's like y'all are closed-minded, no matter what I say.
That's your warning. Do not insult my counsel, please.
I'm not insulting your counsel. I'm saying that y'all are closed-minded and not listening to what I'm saying.
We hear what you're saying, but we also have rules we have to follow.
But do y'all have a... Can y'all make a decision saying that I can have 30? Can any of y'all say, give this guy 30 more days? Can any of y'all say that? Can y'all vote and say, hey, give this guy 30 days?
Mr. Dyson, your time is up. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Closing the public hearing. I need an introduction to resolution 23, 24.
Callard Dyson.
I'm going to do both at the same time. I need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
At your call. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I need a motion to pass resolution 23, 24, 23, 2024.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Item number 12. Public hearing to consider abatement of nuisance structure located at 811 North Main Avenue. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. Groups presenting or supporting the same similar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. Public hearing is now open.
Okay, I'm going to ask you guys if I could get a 30-day extension to improve the property. I've been working on it for 10 days hard and made much improvement. Have any of y'all rode by there in the last 10 days and looked and seen anything? Have any of y'all rode by and looked at my property and seen that it has improved?
Benji, I ride by every day, but and I adore you and I consider you a friend, but right here, I got in the business. I haven't seen any improvement. All I've seen is stuff being added to it.
Well, you want me to go take a picture and bring it back to you right now?
I wished it was that easy.
Well, it is that easy. I mean, if I go over there and come back in five minutes with pictures showing... Did you take pictures 10 days ago when y'all went over?
I haven't been over.
Okay, y'all take pictures, so if you say...
There was pictures taken in.
Okay, all right. If I bring you pictures in the next 10 minutes showing improvement, will y'all give me a 30-day extension? I mean, drastic improvement, not no little improvement.
I think I asked that, Mr. Dyson, that just...
Well, that was another property. This is another property.
But I think they're all we've done the same.
Well, I got five minutes to ask you a question, right? For these five minutes, if I have five, four minutes, I'm asking y'all for 30-day extension that I have made great improvement. Does any of y'all hear me? I made great improvement, and I can take pictures and bring it to you right now.
We heard you the first several, several times.
Well, I'll say it again. I've made great improvement, and I'm asking for a 30-day extension.
I think you mentioned that.
Does y'all think this is fair? I mean, I'm just asking for a 30-day extension. I'm asking over and over and over. I'm begging you guys, give me a 30-day extension, and y'all just wet your nose in the air and don't care. I mean, this is my property. This is where I live. This is my place that my family had for 100 years. Okay, I know that it don't look good, but it's not the worst-looking property in town, and it's going to be the best-looking property in town if y'all give me 30 more days, and that's a promise. And everybody deserves a second chance, right? I mean, you say it's been two years. It's been 10 days since y'all put that sign in my yard. It hasn't been ongoing for two years. It's been 10 days. The two years don't count. Because when y'all left, y'all left. It was over. Y'all come back and say, it messed up again. I say, oh, Lord, I got to do some work, and that's what I've been doing. I'll go take pictures right now and come back and show it to you, that my yard is clean. There's nothing, as you can see in front of the fence, that is eyesore. But still, y'all are not hearing what I'm saying, that y'all are just closed-minded and don't want to give a guy a chance. I don't know what y'all trying to do. Y'all want to come in there, knock all my properties down, and charge me $100,000. I don't think that's right. Y'all charged me $12,000 in two days. I mean, does anybody think that's fair? They get the highest guy, the highest contractor, and go in there and do work, and everything that they pick up and put in the dumpster, they weigh it and charge me how much it weighs. And I don't think it's right. I think that we elect y'all as officials for the city, represent the city, and y'all do a great job. Y'all said your house looks bad and needs improvement, and that's what I'm doing. Y'all should ride by there and see the improvement, and if it don't... Y'all should drive by there and see the improvement. If it, if it don't look no better, do what you gotta do. But if it's improvement, give me thirty more days and it's gonna be even better. That's all I'm asking. Do you guys understand what I'm saying? To put yourself in my shoes. The golden rule, you know, doing others as you better do you. You, you may have something wrong and you wanna fix it, oh, it needs a little bit of time, you know? Nobody's perfect. I'm not saying I'm perfect at all, but I'm just asking for a thirty day extension. All it is, is stuff in the yard, you go in the truck and go. It ain't like rocket science. You know, do y'all have any compassion for a citizen of South Dakota that wants their place to look better? Okay, I'm asking you guys for a thirty day extension. And any of y'all look me in the eye and say, no, you cannot have a thirty day extension, you're not doing nothing, there's no way it's gonna look no better. Yeah, y'all are gonna vote no, you know, but y'all are closed minded. Y'all are closed minded. Why can't y'all give a guy a chance? Thirty day cha, is there, is there a thirty day?
Please lower your voice.
Okay, okay, is there a thirty day, is there a way that y'all give somebody a thirty day? Is that, is y'all's power to give somebody thirty days? Is that within y'all's power?
You met your five minute mark.
Okay, I'm asking you guys, is that within y'all's power?
We, you met your time.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Public hearing is closed. I need a motion to introduce resolution number twenty-four, twenty-two, four.
I'll introduce.
Need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I need a motion to pass.
Motion.
Asha Fowler, second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Item number thirteen, excuse me, public hearing to consider abatement of nuisance structure located at one hundred East Eighth Street. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. Groups presenting or supporting the same similar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. Open public hearing and call for comments.
Okay, can you all explain to me what abatement, what abatement is or what, what, can I tell you?
You made a nuisance.
Not a abatement, you said, what, what, whatever she just said, abatement of one hundred East Eighth Street.
On this one, this one, from what I understand, you just have to get this one cleaned up.
This is true, you gotta get all that cleaned up, all the cars are going to attach, it's got busted out windshield and you don't drive, or you may drive, they all, they've all got an end regulation.
I don't have no cars that got busted out windshield.
Okay, you might have got fixed. The pictures we have here, there's some that, that's got busted windows out, there's some that don't have a tag on them. There's some that are part illegal inside the road, you know, you've got all them pallets and whatever else is back there, you know, all that's gotta get cleaned up.
This is correct for home, this is one of the ones that we're just asking you to clean up.
No, no, this is, that's not what it says.
No?
I'm sorry, this is, this is full of it.
Full of it, what does that, any full of it?
Demolition of the structure.
Demolition of the structure.
Hold on, isn't this?
No, y'all, y'all are outrageous.
Now, one oh eight's the one you live in, right?
One hundred East Eighth Street.
That's the one you live in, huh?
Yes, and one oh eight is in perfect shape also.
You live in one hundred or one oh eight?
I live in one hundred.
See, that's what I said, one hundred.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, the one he's living in.
That's where I was gonna.
So abatement means, the abatement means demolition?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, I got five minutes to talk, what I'm asking is, is a thirty day extension so I can improve the property to y'all's satisfaction. Does anybody hear me?
We hear you. Mike, can you further explain some of this to us, please?
The one he lives in, the white house behind Dixie's Road.
That's, I understand that's not the one he lives in, he lives in the one, I don't remember which number it is, about the third one down from.
That's one hundred East Eighth Street, the, the big house. You know, it's kinda, it stands out.
The notice is that the issue based on this is for us.
The one with the big porch all the way around.
But they abate what was started until it stopped and now it's, it's the year is ending to unhaul. I don't have an issue with that, but I brought it up at the time when Scott was leaving and Scott was worried about it too. And we'll do whatever you want.
Okay, I got my five minutes, we need to get into it, I got my five minutes.
Well, I'm, I'm kinda.
What I'm saying is, is there's nothing wrong with the house. I mean, you could, that's why I came through here and it's still there.
But, Mr. Dixon, what I'm, what I'm asking, I'm asking Nate, Nate knows you personally, which one you're actually living in, 'cause you may be able to clean up that one. I mean, I would hate to take.
No, it is cleaned up. You go over there right now, I'm not trying to get a smurfy, but it's, I've worked all day long, I've worked till five thirty today to get it cleaned up. Get everything behind the fence, everything hauled off.
But you're saying you live in one hundred.
One hundred East Eighth Street.
But not, and not one oh eight.
One oh eight is next door. And it don't need to be torn down at all either because it.
One oh eight is not the one Mr. Bowe lived in?
No, one hundred East Eighth Street, the big house with the porch around.
Alright, so one hundred, uh, go ahead, Mike, sorry.
I want you to understand, again, building department didn't request this be on the agenda. So we just pulled the records off of what Scott has compiled on this.
He has never been in my house, how could he say anything about my house? He'd never been in there.
Well, that's what.
I have been there.
You have not been in my house.
What I'm saying, they have already been declared a nuisance. If you're living in one, you know, just me on my own, it's just me, if you're living in one one hundred East Eighth Street, I would, you know, I wouldn't be against you giving you some time to clean that one up, but the rest of them, I mean, all of them have been declared a nuisance. And we do have to take the necessary steps so that they can be abated because if we give you all this time after two years, we have to give it to everybody else. And if you're living in this one and this is just me, I can't speak for the rest of the council.
Man, you seem like you're the only one that's reasonable. Okay, there's one thing to be a nuisance, nuisance is stuff in the yard, there's another thing to knock the whole structure down. You know, why knock the structure down? Because there's stuff in the yard. That is my only source of income is rental property. And my grandfather built those houses and they're not in bad shape. They need to be modeling because tenants go in there and mess it up. And the roof needs done, but there's not a hole in the roof. There's a hole in the roof in the, the house that burned, but all the other houses are, are fossil level.
But by the city standards, they have been declared a nuisance.
By one command standards?
No, there's a board and then we know.
But have y'all all been over there and looked at the house?
No, that's why we.
I mean, I've got one guy, one guy's opinion that the house got torn down.
Okay, I just, I just.
Can I get somebody with second opinion?
You live in one hundred East Eighth Street.
One hundred East Eighth Street.
Alright, Mike, talk to us.
Uh, one guy is gonna say.
Mr. Dixon.
You're down to one minute.
I got five minutes, while I see, get off of my five minutes.
Hey, you don't raise your voice at the council members, you're down to one minute.
I got one minute, I got one minute, you ask me a question.
And then Mike can talk, because he's still entitled to his family. Tell him, Mike, let him, let him.
You got thirty seconds.
I hear this, too.
Thirty seconds.
I know, but.
He, he goes over there, don't even go in the house, he looks, he looks from in the back door, say, oh, this house ain't good, I know good, and he walks off. You know, I'm a carpenter, I know what's good and what's bad and what needs to be done. I built, I built houses before. I built sheds, you know, I'm, I'm, that's my job as a carpenter. I know what's good and what's bad. And I'm telling you, it don't need to be torn down. It's got rough cut tuba floors, they're distic, they're real tuba floors, they're not, they're new tuba floors and they're strong and they're not rotten.
Mr. Dixon, your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Y'all gonna vote no anyway, go ahead, I get my lawyer.
I cannot say every house over there needs to be torn down, that's in.
Okay, that's.
Mr. Dixon, please remain silent, it's your first warning.
That's the file that Scott had compiled, which is needing the yard cleaned up, what they need to be destroyed. However, this ended up on the agenda, person or persons that put it there should have been prepared.
I know.
I hate to be this way, but this.
Yeah, and I get it, that was the whole point of us getting the nuisance abatement board in place because, you know, things like this, they either have to be cleaned up or they have to be abated.
The whole thing is in Scott's files and saying that this house needs to be torn down, it may not be correct because it was not determined that everything needs to be torn down. There are some that need to be torn down and it was also, I don't have this information in front of you either. Because I was, I did not know where we were going, how it was gonna be put on the spot, but we have some of these houses that he says that people lived in, so I had utilities up to them in eight or ten years.
Okay, let me.
That's wrong, that is wrong, that's wrong.
Mr. Dixon, you have your turn, if you, if we gotta turn again, we will text you to leave. I know, but you're gonna have.
Mr. Dixon, Kelly, please escort him out, please.
But Mike, let me ask you this, though, because if you're saying what you're saying, we have this in front of us and we're declaring these to be abated, but you're just saying.
I'm saying that you, you need all the information in front of you that was in Scott's files.
So this shouldn't have been put on here then if that's the case, that's what I'm saying, so how can we declare something?
You haul the information out of the, but it was scheduled, it was.
I know, but he's still sitting here saying, our building and code person, that's what I'm saying.
But we, but we reviewed everything when we scheduled it.
We had it in our last council meeting.
But Mike, it's our building and code person is just sitting here saying, we're not building it, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going against everybody, but what I'm saying is, we're not building and code people, that's why we have people in place to do these things for us. But he's sitting here saying, he can't say, tear the house down. So how can we, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, and that's why I'm saying, the one that he's living in does need to be, maybe give him some more time on this one.
Well, the real problem is if, is if Mike is saying that the list may somehow not be correct.
Yeah.
Then we don't have the right information.
I don't know what's.
If I might.
When you declare something a nuisance, don't mean that the property's cleaned.
That's right, means, some of the time means clean it up, get it up and tow.
Get somebody to clean it up and bill it.
Exactly what happened on Spring Street could happen.
May I have a name?
Yes, sir.
This hearing was, was, I requested it be a hearing. It had been a year and he had not done anything. And to serve due process, we're, we're, y'all are not declaring anything to be a public nuisance, all you're doing is like giving him an opportunity to say that it's not like it used to be. And, and I'm not gonna comment on the evidence that shows it's not, it is like it used to be. However, in order to give him due process, he was given a hearing so that he could come in here and show you that some of those didn't, that he had cleaned them up, it had been a year since they were declared nuisances. Well, unless he has convinced any, on any of those buildings that they have been, then it stands as if it was the same way it was when it was, whether it was to be torn down or to clean up, you're not changing any of that. It's whatever they, and I understand they may have a wrong address on them. But all it was, was to confirm that he had not done anything in a year.
Okay, I understand that, but.
I just need to figure out what's being torn down and what's being fixed.
And also, why, why do you bring, why do you bring in, why do you bring in the pictures?
Well, we, as I said, we worked it to five thirty, like, I mean, I took a shot, I'm going to go out there and my phone died, I went took a picture. My phone died while I was working, babe.
But.
Like I said, you could, I could probably go take pictures right now.
But we're past that, Mr. Dixon, I just find it hard to believe if I got these, this amount of properties on the list to, that they're saying that it's a nuisance and I know I've been working hard to clean it up, I didn't want any, I didn't want anything to clean my case.
Yes, ma'am, well, I'm, I'm telling you guys, my word, that, that, that it's getting better and, and, like, like you said, just because there's stuff in the yard, don't mean you have to tear the whole house down. You know, give me a chance to clean the yard up and, and paint the house and do something. If it's structurally bad, if it's gonna fall in on somebody, you have to tear it down. But if it's, if it's structurally secure, I'll tear it down.
Okay, Mr. Dixon, let me ask Mike, Mike, what's the next step in this? What's the next step after this, today? Or when, what's the next step?
The next step is to, city at some point, it's been a year and nothing was ever done. So it's gonna be done, but we don't know exactly when. We don't, we don't have.
What's gonna be done then?
The, the cleaning up of the, of the property.
And for.
Tearing down the houses, it's gonna have to be contracted with somebody.
I know.
So this hearing's over, say this hearing's over, he had his time to say there's, we think there's no evidence to show that it's been any confirmation, any cleaning up. So we can vote on that, but later down the road, the next step, we could still say, alright, this one needs cleaning up, this one needs torn down, this one needs cleaning up and we can do with them because we've already went through the voting process. We don't have to say this one oh eight is gonna be torn down tonight. We can decide which one was the cleanup and which one was the tear down, correct?
Yeah, but that's, that's not what I was asking. What I was saying was, since, the reason I was asking what the next step was, is because, so we still have to schedule whatever we're gonna do. What happens if we shows up and he's cleaned up? Are we still gonna do what we said we were gonna do? But you, I'm, that's why I'm asking. So if we show up and he's done what he says he's gonna do, what happens then?
So if you're talking about the park, cleaning up.
I know, I'm not, I'm just playing devil's advocate here because.
Then there's nothing to clean up.
Exactly, so that, that's what you just answered my question and that's why I asked the question, because we're gonna vote the way, you know, what would be a motive, because he's had, the process has gone on for almost two years, here we are, he has no proof that he's cleaned up, but if we show up and there's a tremendous amount of process, of progress and he's cleaned it up, does that stop the process? That's what I'm asking, does that stop the process? Because right now, I can't, I can't take your word, you understand? I can't take your word, you don't have any proof. So that's, that's why I'm asking this, hold on. Does that make sense?
If you declare a nuisance, whatever Scott had in the file is going to be the nuisance. And I, I'm not going to have the authority when the council says fix that nuisance to say, I think it's fixed, okay, but I don't, you're the one that's voting.
You're still not asked, ask, and maybe, maybe I sound, you're still not answering my question. So if you, if you, we're declaring the house a nuisance, do you understand what I'm saying? And we show up with all this equipment and all these things that, that we're scheduled to do and there's nothing to do, what happens then? Do we still abate everything? That's what I'm asking. So we still going with the process?
But the key is because you don't have the file.
If he's abated it.
But you don't, but you don't, but you don't know what Scott's recommendation is.
Judge Barkley. If he's abated it, then there won't be anything to abate.
Let's just point it out, but, but, but the issue is, 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 is the nuisance that's abated, obviously, there's no reason for the city to spend money.
Exactly.
If the property is condemned or the property is to be abated and it's not abated, then it's still the city's responsibility by y'all's order.
Yes.
To do that and then, and then bill him for the cost of it.
Okay, so that, so, so you just answered my question, thank you. So do you understand that?
Yes, ma'am, can I say one thing?
Come, come up here so we can explain to you, please. Yes, so let me, let me tell you what happened, I think you're gonna be happy with this. But after this, there's really nothing else, there's nothing else anybody can do to help you. So we're, we're declaring a nuisance because it is a nuisance from the last proof that we've had. But if you go and get it cleaned up, by the time we schedule for somebody to come over and do the abatement and there's nothing to clean up and nothing to do, then.
You're good.
You're good. But, so, but that's on you, the ball's in your court now. So there won't be an extension, there won't be anything else you can ask from the city or any of that. So in reality, you do still have time, but as a council, we still have to declare a nuisance because of the process, but you still can get it cleaned up and I, and I advise you, I know you just said you're only one person, I think you better prioritize what you wanna clean up because we don't know the process and we don't know the schedule of when these things can be done.
Okay, yes, ma'am, let me ask you guys again, what does abatement mean? Does that mean demolition?
Whatever, whatever it takes.
Whatever's on file.
Abatement, abatement of the houses, like demolition of the houses.
Whatever's on board.
Whatever's necessary to clean it up.
That's what I'm asking, if I clean up the yard, are y'all still gonna come tear the houses down?
Well, I advise you to clean up everything. So that's why I say, I suggest you prioritize these.
The reason why I want a thirty day extension is for my peace of mind, where y'all can come tomorrow and start tearing my stuff down. If you give me thirty days, I know I got thirty days to do something, you know, I, I know I got time, but I can wake up Monday morning, I can work all weekend long and get ninety percent of it done and y'all come over here and knock down all my houses because there's stuff in the yard and I do not want that. I want a thirty day extension just to, just to, just to give.
Mr. Dixon, I think we're being gracious.
You're being gracious by what?
We can't.
By voting to tear my stuff down? How can y'all, how can y'all vote to tear? Have any of y'all been in my, have any of y'all been in my house? How can y'all vote to tear a house down?
You have had your time to speak.
I don't have a five minute time yet, she told me come up here. I'm asking y'all, how can y'all, how can y'all vote to tear my house down?
Mr. Dixon, that is.
How can y'all tear my house down? We ain't been in my house.
Ask your last morning, Kelly, escort him out, please.
That's not fair, that's not fair, that's not fair.
Maybe somebody can.
Okay, um, public hearing is now closed.
Item thirteen, correct?
Yes, item number thirteen, the public hearing is now closed. I need an introduction for resolution number twenty-five, twenty-two, four, please.
I'll introduce.
Asha Fowler. I need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration, please.
Motion.
Tiffany, second.
Second.
Asha, all in favor? All in favor?
Yay.
I now need a motion to pass, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Yay. Item number fourteen, public hearing to consider abatement of nuisance structure located at one zero eight east eighth street. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. Groups presenting or supporting the same similar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. Public hearing is now open. Hearing, no public remarks on this one. Now close the public hearings. I need a an introduction to resolution number twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, please.
I'll introduce.
I now need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Now need a motion to pass.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Let's take a five minute recess, and we'll reconvene in five minutes. Number fifteen, action that is necessary to set a public hearing on rezoning of property located at six ninety-one West Fourth Streets and MX one to MX two for April second, twenty twenty-four. If you consider at this meeting, resolution twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-four, I need an introduction, please.
I'll introduce.
I need a motion to pass, please.
Motion.
To suspend the rules.
Second.
Give immediate consideration. Now I need a motion to pass, please.
Why don't I get both?
Oh, all in favor, sorry.
Yay.
Now I need a motion to pass.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Item number sixteen, action that is necessary to set a public hearing on rezoning of property located at seven zero five West Fourth Street, zone MX one to MX two for April second, twenty twenty-four. I need an introduction, please.
I'll introduce.
Need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
I need a motion to pass, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Item number seventeen, action that is necessary to approve resolution number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, T A twenty-three, nine sixteen, proposal for engineering design services for streetscape improvements in downtown city in amount of seventy-seven thousand eighty-eight dollars, and no change. I need an introduction to resolution twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, please.
I'll introduce.
Need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
I heard it. Tiffany Nix first.
Second.
Ashton Fowler second. All in favor?
Yay.
Now I need a motion to pass, please.
Motion.
Ashton Fowler first, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Item number eighteen, action that is necessary, let's see, we've, we removed item eighteen. We removed item nineteen. Item number twenty, action that is necessary to approve resolution number thirty-two, twenty twenty-four, for the temporary appointment of attorney Austin B. Smith as public defender for Silicaga. Need an introduction to resolution thirty-two, twenty twenty-four, please.
I'll introduce.
And I need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Now I need a motion to pass, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Item number twenty-one, action that is necessary to approve Stevie White to hire a contractor at his expense to dismantle the bank gate from the Old Food World Building and donate to Stevie White to be placed in his antique auto showroom as a memory and conversation piece. Need a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Item number twenty-two, action that is necessary to approve appointment of Taylor Farr to the airport authority board for the remaining term ending August twenty twenty-four.
Motion. Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Item number twenty-three, action that is necessary to accept the recommendation from Mayor Heidel to approve administration and finance department accounting manager job description. Need a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Item number twenty-four, action that is necessary to approve the return of cash bond posted by Kathy Parrish in the amount of one thousand dollars for case number MC twenty-three, zero 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 eight one five. Need a motion, please.
Motion.
Please, Perryman, second.
Second.
Tiffany, all in favor?
Yay.
Item number twenty-five, action that is necessary to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-three accounts payable for the invoices in the amount of nine thousand eighty-five dollars and sixty cents. Need a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Item number twenty-six, action that is necessary to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four accounts payable invoices in the amount of five hundred fifty-eight thousand seventy-five dollars and two cents. Motion?
Motion.
And twenty percent, sorry.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Now I need a motion to enter into executive session. We will return to adjourn with no further business to discuss. Uh, well, we'll, we will have further business, I'm sorry.
When, when, so we didn't have to?
No. And the only ones allowed to be present is the mayor, city attorney, judge Farr, and council only. May everyone please exit the room.
How long do you need, for the record?
Which exception to the open meetings act are you citing? And did you say how long you think it will be?
Thirty minutes.
Pause.
Pause. The council, mayor, judge Farr, and everybody else that simply exits the room. Alright, I call this meeting back to order at eight oh one P M. These are item number twenty-five. I'm going to go ahead and speak on record, this is, I feel like I'm being retaliated against because of having the whistleblower, just keep that in mind. Action that is necessary to amend agenda to include, item number twenty-five, to include election of city council president. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, yay.
Nay.
Is that four oh one?
Was it, what was it, Lee?
It's three to two.
Three to two.
Who was the second? I didn't hear anybody go.
This is a terrible decision for you.
Me, Tiffany, Lee, Law.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Again, I want it on record that this is because I'm the whistleblower on the situation. Nominations.
I'm gonna nominate, oh, I nominate Tiffany Nix as president.
Third second nomination.
Second.
Oh, she's nominated, I apologize.
Hearing no other nominations. I need a motion for Tiffany Nix, council president.
Oh, roll call. Or, yay.
Ashton Fowler. Tiffany Nix.
Yes.
Nate Brewer.
Yes.
Need to close nominations. All in favor?
Yay.
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 Tiffany Nix, you may now take over the meeting.
Alright, we have an additional ad item, election of city council president pro temp until, um, the next election, election in November twenty twenty-five. Uh, we now open the floor for nominations, twenty, well, twenty twenty-four.
I nominate Nate Brewer for president pro temp.
Alright, we got Ashton Fowler nominated Nate Brewer. Are there any more?
I'm Nate Lee, Perryman.
We'll open the floor for, um, roll call votes for Nate Brewer, um, Ashton Fowler.
Yay.
Nate?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Law?
No.
Me?
Yes.
I declare Nate Brewer president pro temp. I guess we don't need to vote on the next one.
Maybe read the papers.
Read it what?
Next page.
Next page.
Number twenty-seven.
Alright, action item that is necessary to amend agenda to include, item number twenty-seven, action that is necessary to approve William Davis located at three seventeen West Third Street to vacate the premises by April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Now it's time for anyone to address the council, no action will be taken at this meeting. Please come to the, um, to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, Paul, to address the council. Since there's no one at this time that would like to address the council, I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Meeting adjourned at eight oh five.